Welcome to the business meeting for Wednesday, October 21st, 2020. We stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Justice for all.
All right, Lee, please take roll call, Lee.
Yes. Councilman Skorinji?
Present.
Councilwoman Resnetti?
Present.
Councilwoman Riley?
Present.
Councilwoman Freeman?
Present.
Councilman Burns?
Present.
Councilman Strong?
Present.
And President Scanlon?
Present.
That's all seven here.
Thank you. I have to approve of the minutes from October 7th, 2020. Councilman Strong, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask council to unanimously approve the minutes from the October 7th, 2020 business meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, tonight we have to set a public hearing. Lee, could you read the public hearing, please?
Yes. Binghamton City Council Mayor will hold a public hearing regarding the proposed 2021 City of Binghamton budget as amended. This public hearing will be held during a special city council business meeting to consider the public hearing and business. The council wishes to entertain held on Tuesday, October 27th, 2020 at 5:15 PM. In City Hall, and the meeting will be conducted virtually.
All right, thank you, Lee. Okay, under the public comment section, Lee, did you receive any email, anybody?
Um, yes.
Okay, how many do you have?
Well, I received three, but I think two of them are meant for our public hearing on Tuesday. But one of them is like there for tonight, I can start with that one.
Well, Lee, if you want to work that in as we're going, it's up to you, however you want to do it, it's fine with me.
Okay, I'll, um, I'll get rid, I'll get, uh, I'll read this one first and then we'll go to the phones.
Okay, thanks.
So this is from Gabriella. It's difficult to pronounce your last name, I Cabano. To the city council, I urge you to support programs that directly assist those struggling with housing insecurity, food insecurity, lack of healthcare and education access, substance use issues, domestic violence and sexual assault instead of increasing police budgets. As Binghamton caters increasingly to our student population, I've witnessed firsthand the use of police power to remove people deemed unsavory, usually those who are ostensibly poor or houseless from the public sphere for the sake of aesthetics. Approaching our city's health and safety issues in this manner is akin to rearranging deck chairs on sick and ship while pastures scramble for help is both in main grossly short sighted. The criminalization of suffering and trauma leads to further suffering and trauma. And feeding this cycle with our funds cannot break it. Best work done by our police officers is work that can be done more effectively by counselors, teachers, medical professionals, and other community leaders. To financially prioritize this work is to invest in healing growth and long-term solutions. Thank you for your consideration, Gabriella I Cabano.
Lee, does Gabriella have an address on there?
Um, she says she lives in District 4, but she doesn't have an address on there.
All right, thank you. All right, Lee, why don't you give the phone number, we'll start taking phone calls, please.
Okay, so to call in tonight, you'll have five minutes to speak. And the phone number to call in is area code 607-772-7101.
Lee, this is Sharon, will you just announce that number for a second time, please?
Yes, that's 772-7101.
We're waiting for a call, phone call, um, if anybody's listening. Please be respectful, you have five minutes to speak, and again, please be respectful.
Lee, this is Sharon, as to the other two email communications that you received, did it appear that their intent was to be heard during public comment tonight?
No, it looks like they're intended for the public hearing on Tuesday.
Thank you.
Okay. Hi, you're here for public comment? Okay, hold on, I'll put you through. Hi, please state your full name and address for the record.
My name is Malika Mohammed, and I live on Muncil Street, 8 Muncil Street, Binghamton, New York.
Okay, you have five minutes.
We are today with some 50 community residents representing the DACA coalition. We are a coalition, a group of people who want to reimagine policing in our community. We support investment, accountability, and reinvestment of in our community. We are using this time during the public comment period to voice our concern about the public, the police budget. We were not surprised to learn that the city budget process regarding public input is a sham. Unlike the county budget process, which would help, would help the public hearing prior to their budget deliberation, we were told that the cities traditionally hold the public hearing on the same day that they vote on the budget. This basically renders the public hearing into a performative process which does not value public concern. And we are here tonight because we do want to voice our concerns, okay? Been calling the main office about this government reimagining the police situation to no response. And I understand that they already set up their coalition. I've been working with the police for years as a crossing guard. It's really a shame that you don't get people's opinion on what's going on with our tax dollars. I'm a homeowner, I pay my taxes, and it's really sad that I don't have a clue as far as where my money goes. You buy military weapons, you buy tanks and houses. My taxes, I was on a tank housing duty. I have other things to do. I got a cane, a horse, a friend, I have my dog, you know, with a license. But I have no choice in that, but you telling me I also don't have a choice on where the rest of my money goes? And I have other people here that want to say something.
Excuse, Lee, they're gonna have to call back in. If she's done, they're gonna have to call back in.
All right, thank you.
Let me, let me say something, if people are, since this is where people are calling in here tonight, there's a lot of misinformation out there. We're not having the public hearing to vote on the same night. There's, there's tonight in between, there's three nights in between, at least two nights. So that's misinformation, I'm not sure where she got.
Hi, you're here for the public hearing? Okay, I'll, I'll put you through. Okay, please state your full name and address for the record.
My name is Michael Buskett, 45 North Street, Binghamton, New York, 13905. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, you have five minutes.
Thank you. Thank you, because I know we're going over the budget, it's a very important issue and a lot of people have it. Is, one of the things I want to emphasize is the police funding. It is something that is essential and necessary for our community. And I'll tell you, I'll start off with the first example being something that I have experienced as a homeowner in Binghamton, where we had an individual break into my home who was on drugs and endangered both my life and those of others in my home at that time. It was about four in the morning on a Saturday. I have to tell you that because of the swift action of our local police and law enforcement coming over, that prevented anyone that night from being injured in my home. And as they were trying to apprehend the individual, he had broken into another home to try and escape. So they didn't save just one life that night, but several houses of homes, individuals in their homes. Things we've seen continuously, that's why our police, since we've had the body cams, have shown that they have been exemplary across the state in not having a single police brutality or police abuse case that has been proven. They're doing a good job. We don't need to get rid of them when they're doing the job we want all police to do. Most importantly, I want us to also remember something that's very important. When we look at every single other city in this nation that has taken the unfortunate step of reducing their police funding, in a sense, defunding or disbanding the police to some degree, in every single city, we have seen an increase in crime and violent crime especially, and the number of shootings. That's in New York City, which had 176% increase in the number of shootings so far this year. And it's looking to go higher. In Baltimore, then in Portland, in Seattle, Minneapolis, very famously, as they're trying to disband their police completely, they have come out and within two months of them disbanding the police, they are now saying they don't understand why there's a massive increase in crime, why their citizens are victims of violence, and their constituents are saying, why don't we have the protection of the police, why are we in danger now? That is a lesson, we have seen the experiment, that lesson has been taught, and we don't need to follow and do the same thing that Minneapolis already did, which is endanger their citizens. Our police are doing a good job, they have been doing a good job, and I'm thankful for the job that they have done. There is absolutely no reason why we should not let them continue to do the job. And honestly, I would even counter, we need more officers. Because what I would love to see is having an officer be able to walk the beat, and at the same time, to be able to go through without taking away from those officers who are going throughout the community to answer calls. Because what some may not realize is, if you take away police officers, that's going to increase the amount of time it takes for them to get to the next case, which means someone's life may be in danger because of that. They can't walk the street and walk a beat like we used to see in the TV shows if they can't get to the next case to be able to protect the next person. So we have to think this through.
You have one minute.
Because it's not about, no problem, it's not about just the emotion of, oh, somebody, some officer somewhere in the nation at one point did something wrong. Our police have it. And we want to make sure that they can continue to do so. And if we want them to be more interactive, let's have more of them so they can do that and still protect us. I think that's an incredibly important thing to keep in mind as we fund our police in this very difficult time of COVID, on this very important budget. I thank you.
Thank you. Hi, you're here for public comment? Okay, I'll put you through. Hi, please state your full name and address, man.
Hi, this is Alfonso Galileo, I live in the southern district of Binghamton. So pretty much what I would like to say is that the governor back in the spring after North Ford murder issued an executive order, tell him the possibility that they had to put together a community, a committee for the community. And we haven't seen nothing from city council or the mayor about that. He said that they have until April of 2021 to put together a plan. To date, the mayor and the city council has done nothing. We, the community, have done more to reimagine policing than they have, and they should listen to us. Numerous community members have asked to be part of the committee, but have heard nothing from the city hall. Today, we have put forth a plan to divest the police and reinvest in the community. As mentioned before, the county studies have found that community is safer and healthier when still community and expand services for communities. Reimagining police does not mean adding more police officers, that's the old way, and the old way has worked. We are looking at housing and investment services and reinvesting them to support community services by helping mental health counseling, subsidies, support job development and new services. We have laid out a roadmap for the mayor and city council. Also, in the coming weeks, we will be issuing a police accountability proposal. As I said, we have seen nothing from the mayor or the council. We call on you to listen to our community voices, to be less, less police, not more. Divest in police and reinvest in the community. Police do not, pretty much, deter crime. Like, there's gonna be, crime doesn't decrease because there's more, more police, that's just not the case. And especially to hire police to police the park, that's, I feel like that's a waste of tax, tax dollars. They're already at the park. They're already patrolling the park. We don't need more police officers to be parked half-park for nothing. And pretty much, police actually protect property more than they, they protect people. But there's a lot of, there's a lot of domestic violence that's occurring, and a lot of times when you call the police officers, they say that they can't do nothing about it. So, uh, reinvest in housing, especially domestic violence shelters, food in places that have food insecurity, making sure that our youth have something to do so that way that they're not getting into any type of trouble. So maybe putting back together the youth force is a good idea, and just reinvest it in our community. When you care about the people. So, um, that's all I have to say, and I really would really like my tax dollars to be used in the community to help and feed people and help people with mental disorders, and also making sure that people that come out of jail are able to get housing, have a job, and not become desperate for that their community crime again, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, have the other council people experienced these callers fading in and out, or is it my phone?
I'm hearing that as well.
All right, I, Lee, is there something that we can do about that, any ideas? The callers are kind of fading now.
I'll try and turn it up. Hi, you're here for public comment? Okay, I'll put you through. Okay, please state your full name and address for the record.
Uh, my name is Cherry Weathers, and I live at 20 Rexford Street, Binghamton.
Okay, you have five minutes.
So... Um, okay, so we are here tonight to be heard. We want you to open your minds to the fact that our community could be better served and safer and healthier if we divested some money from the police budget and reinvested in vital community services. I heard earlier somebody speaking about disinformation. And I noted how much disinformation was allowed to be passed along from the second caller. We are talking about Binghamton, New York here. We are not talking about Missouri, Mississippi, Chicago, or any of those other places there where they're having their problems too. There are problems in Binghamton, there are problems in Binghamton with policing. The answer is not more cops. We have a very large amount of our budget keeps getting eaten up with law enforcement and with the jails. That money could be spent elsewhere for the benefit of the entire city, not just the few people that get to have county jobs, um, or, you know, the contracts or any of that stuff. I have family members that, uh, they're not police officers, but they do work in law enforcement. I know what their jobs mean to them. I know how working in our jail has changed them. I've seen them go from working in healthcare to where they really were helping people to finding a job that paid, paid a little better, gave them a little more security. And they, they thought that maybe they could help people from the inside. Changing the, from the inside is a myth. We are not going to change anything by throwing more money at the same problem. These people that go into policing because they are misguided into thinking they are helping people. They would be better served, and I understand, I am not from a rich family, it is hard to go to school and get your social work or degree, your master's in social work, or any of the degrees where you are actually going to be able to help people. So where you think, well, if I'm a cop, maybe I can be a good cop and I can help people and I can go in and I can make sure people aren't getting beat in the jail system, and I can make sure that they do get their medicine when they're supposed to get their medicine. Because I was a nurse and I understood how important that was. But then you get in there, and it's an us versus them mentality, which is still is with our police force. It is blue versus everybody else out there. That's not helping the people who want to help. Let's give them a way where they can go to school. They don't have to take the, what I call the soldier's option, so you can go to, you can be a soldier, so you can go to school, but you can't afford to go to school another way. Helping people by getting into something that is designed to keep people down is not going to help people. The police are not here to protect and serve us. It became painfully obvious when they took it off the cards that they are not here for...
You have one minute.
They are here for the property. So I would like everybody to just open themselves, think of a different way. America wouldn't be here if the people that founded our country and those of us that are here to carry it on keep thinking that the same stuff is gonna keep working. And it doesn't work, when it's broken, we look at it, we fix it, we're Americans, that's what we do. Thank you.
Thank you. The number again is 772-7101. Hi, you're here for public comment? Okay, hold on, I'll put you through. Okay, please state your full name and address for the record.
Uh, yeah, I live on the south side of Binghamton. Derek Goodison.
Excuse me, could you say, excuse me? Please stop him to say, Lee, we need his name, please.
Yeah? Uh, Mr. President, do you want me to ask him to speak up, or is there something else you want?
Well, we need, we need his name, he didn't say his name or, or address, please, we need an address and name for these people, please. South side doesn't work.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are you still there?
Yeah.
Okay, so, uh, council president requested that you state your full name and address for the record.
Derek Goodison, 20 Rexford Street.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, I'm here to talk about the budget, and it seems like on your guys' part, it's just like a lot of neglect. Like, you're immune to a lot of these problems that we see on a daily basis in our community. Poverty, hunger, uh, shelter, like, these are things that you don't think about at the beginning of the day because you're just conditioned not to. So for us, it's, it's more just trying to avoid the negative consequences that come with these things. And your police force is one of those negative consequences, and you just keep investing in that instead of the community. The police force doesn't exist to stop crime, I mean, we have more officers than ever was necessary in Binghamton, and somehow the numbers have gone down and you still just hire. But you're not concerned about crime. You're concerned about something else, obviously. You're buying tanks, you're wasting money on Elmo, you waste money on squad cars. And we could just be providing housing at a reasonable rate to people that fall victim to the low wages given in this area. It, it's... It's hard to put into words, like, how you can comfortably just keep putting money into oppression and torture and just not even bat an eye at the implications that you're making our community stronger by doing that. Like, I see, you, you tend to just cater to people like the second caller who is very misinformed on issues of like poverty and crime, and just tends to use propaganda to get his point across about how like, police just want to be helpful. No, police just want to get their paycheck, man, they're like everybody else. So like, hiring more isn't gonna make Broom County's problems, I mean, like, look at the problems that arise in COVID. Putting two more officers on the force isn't gonna stop people from getting evicted. It's not gonna put food in people's mouths, not gonna put electricity into anyone's home. You're, it's doing nothing. You're beating around the bush, you're taking money away from the community, you're taking money from the community to strengthen the oppression of it. That's my time, I, I resent the rest of my time.
Thank you. Okay, that number again is 772-7101. Hi, you're here for public comment? Okay, I'll put you through. Okay, please state your full name and address for the record.
My name is Karen Runia, and I live on Chatham Street on the left side of Binghamton. I am calling because I have been trying to listen to the budget hearing, as they are, over the last few days or the last few week, couple of weeks that you had them. And I have to say, because I have sat in the seats that you sit in and been through... and been through this process before, um, wow, I think, is all I can say. First of all, council has authority to oversee the budget. It is the mayor's budget. That is certainly true. And you need to, um, you know, it would be very difficult to change any of the things in the mayor's budget. But what I don't see is any attempt of anyone to work together to see if things might be done differently. I've looked at the budget in this time, not knowing what's coming from the federal government, not knowing what's coming from the state government, knowing that we've taken a hit in a number of revenues because of COVID. This budget seems like a sham to me. I understand the mayor wanted to be able to say that he cut the budget for so many years. But, you know, a tenth of a percent cut rather than being responsible to those of us who are property owners who ultimately this bill is gonna come due, and we don't know what's coming down the road. And it would have been more responsible to stay flat or to even be more realistic in some of the revenue projections so that we don't get blindsided down the road. I also wanna say that I think that the way that you treat each other is very disturbing to me. It's unprofessional. It's disrespectful. And it's not conducive to working for the citizens who elected you all to represent us. I have been actually really appalled at the way that some members of council have been treated for having the absolute audacity to do their job. Their job is to represent the people who elected them. And that means that they need to get their constituents' questions answered. They need to get their own questions answered. And to be disdainful or disrespectful or dismissive of people's legitimate questions is just really, it's, it's appalling. So I understand that this is public comment for Binghamton City Council regularly scheduled business meeting. And I understand that there will be a public hearing on the budget next Tuesday. And I really hope that all these people that called tonight call again next week. And I really hope that you as council members are listening to the people that you're supposed to be representing. The fact of the matter is, things can be done vastly different. Over the last decade, how many police officers have been added? We have not seen a corresponding reduction in crime for those additional officers. There are better ways to do it. And Mr. Vasquez called and talked about places where it didn't work. Well, there are plenty of places-
You have one minute.
Where changing how you police does work. And that is a huge part of the budget. Not the only part that needs examination, in my opinion, but a huge part nonetheless. I'd just like to ask in my last 30 seconds to please be kind and respectful to each other because nothing is ever gonna get better if you don't. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Terri.
Hi, you're here for public comment? Hold on, I'll put you through. Please state your full name and address for the record.
Uh, Rashid Douglas. I live on St. Goldenland in Binghamton.
Lee, he lives where? Mr. Douglas, where do you live?
North side.
What address, please?
316 Main.
That's on the north side. I, I'm not sure what you're, what you're doing. You're, what are you, what are we doing here?
I can barely hear you. I can barely hear you.
I don't know if that's a problem. I think you live at, you live at Enboll, don't you?
All right. Can you hear me?
You can't hear me, obviously.
Sounds like you're in an echo chamber. I'm just gonna assume people can hear me, okay?
Lee, hold on one second. Don't, not sure I want this guy to talk. He lives in Enboll, I believe. Let's be honest. I'll take the motion to waive the rules if somebody wants to second that.
I'll make a motion.
I need a second on that, please.
Second.
All right, if he's still there, let him talk, please.
Okay.
Understand that, uh, city council is trying to make it more complicated and more difficult to actually listen to constituents. But we're gonna be heard tonight anyway. Because we do this on our terms, it's not really based on the, uh, the schedule that you put forth. Uh, what people are telling you today is that the budget is, uh, is basically inappropriate, and it harms the city. Much too much funding is putting, being put towards, uh, the law enforcement spending, and it's hurting this community. It's fiscally irresponsible, uh, similar to the, to the county budget, okay? Uh, so, a person after person gets up here and lets you know that it's, it's really just so that there is a record of this. And when it is time for you to be held accountable, you cannot deny that you were told that this was not what the community wanted. We, this is exactly what the community wants. The community wants the, the funds and our tax money to be spent more appropriately and not to be wasted on initiatives that do not serve the most marginalized numbers of this community. And right now, city council has not so much as, uh, reached, reached a, uh, released a statement or even followed some of the deadlines that they've put forth um, to address these concerns. Another thing I wanted to address, and this is somewhat of an aside, uh, there was, uh, something I heard earlier on one of the recorded council meetings, and it was about, um, uh, one of the council members, Oivva, mentioning an AR-15 and one of the other council members condescending and saying that, uh, AR-15 was not a military-grade weapon. I just wanna correct him and say it absolutely was a military-grade weapon. It has been used in the military. But more importantly, that's the type of semantics that is kind of serving as a disconnect in this, this community. We don't care about the semantics. We don't care when we call those armed vehicles tanks that you say they're not tanks. To, to the people that they're facing down, those are tanks. You don't get to, um, be pedantic and just try and act like these aren't the, the issues that we're facing in the community. Uh, so, uh, to Giovanni, uh, and whoever else was kind of jumping in on that, that train to, to try and belittle one of the other council, uh, women, shame on you. We know what you're doing. Nobody in the community is buying it. You're not doing a good job. And this goes especially to the conservative members of council. You should be ashamed on yourself for not standing up to the mayor and other powers that be that are misappropriating these funds because you're doing harm to people in this community. Um, so, uh, how much time do I have left?
Two minutes.
I have two minutes left? Great. Okay. So, uh, hang on one second. So I was born in, uh, West Philadelphia, born and raised. Uh, on a playground, that's where I spent most of my days. I was chilling out, maxing, relaxing, mostly cool, and shooting basketball outside the school. Stay with me. So a couple of guys, they were up to no good, and they started making trouble in my neighborhood, in Binghamton. And I got in one fight, and my mom got scared, and she said, "You're moving with your auntie and uncle to Binghamton." So, uh, I begged and pleaded, day after day. And actually, you know, you know where I'm going with this. You waste our time, we'll waste your time. But at the end of the day, you know what you have to do. You know you're a disgrace to this community, and you know that you haven't been listening to the people. Thank you.
Okay, that number again to call in is 772-7101. Hi, you're here for public comment? Hold on, I'll put you through. Okay, please state your full name and address for the record.
Marissa Robinson, 121 Leroy Street.
Okay, you have five minutes.
First of all, I just wanted to say, um, I'm a four-year veteran. I gave four years of my life in this country as a military police officer. I don't not think that we need, you guys need 12 cops. You guys need to put more money into the mental health. 'Cause I can't tell you how many times the VA accountant has, has canceled mental health appointments on me. Uh, PTSD and bipolarism due to the military. And I can't tell you how many times I've been canceled on with UCA appointments. If we had, I come out of pocket right now for my own therapy. And if we have more money put into, into mental health, into the community, more money put into, into these youth programs, we wouldn't have a lot of these youths out here making trouble in, uh, you're, you're talking about breaking into the homes. I mean, I think it was the second, the second caller's that he had somebody break into his home and, 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 oh, whatever. He, we, if we put more money into, into the community, into the youth, then you wouldn't have to have, you wouldn't have a lot of these, a lot of these youths that are, the, the, idle hands is what the devil's playground is, what they say, right? We put more money into the community, you wouldn't have a lot of, you put a lot of money into the, into downtown, into these bars. You got a lot of youth sneaking into these bars that are down here. You got a lot of these cops that go to, that go to, go down here to Little Bennett. They, cops, and they, they, they come out, I used to work there 10 years ago. They come out drunk, driving drunk. I've seen countless cops drive drunk. How many of the, how many of the Binghamton police officers have your guys pulled over their own people and just let them, let them go? But I would hear, but the community, like, we're, we're looked at as a bad guy because they come and people have the voice and they wanna speak up. I just found out about this not too long ago 'cause the information is not really put out there for, for the public or for people to actually, I'm, I'm thankful for this group 'cause you, they're, they're putting this for the community to, to, to be here and to voice our opinions. And you guys are just, it's like the city council meetings. You guys are, you guys are supposed to, to represent the, the public. But you sitting up here, you guys are just acting like little kids, bickering with each other and, and treating us like we don't know what we're talking about. Like, you're treating us like we're nothing. That, that's how I look at it. Like, I'm looking, is she, is she the city, she the city councilman? She's, I mean, Sophia Raffinetti, you're looking like you're disgusted right now. Like, it is, that is, that's how, how you look the whole time. Like, I can feel your energy. This is, and that's why you, you smiling, you smirking. But it's okay.
Excuse me, caller, excuse me. Please stop her for a minute. Excuse me, caller. There's no, there's no need to do that. There, there's no need to do that. That's completely inappropriate. Do not do that, please. You wanna talk about issues, talk about issues.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I'm personally okay with that.
Sophia, I'm not. I'm, I, there's no sense personally attacking anybody on city council. They wanna talk about issues, I have no issue. I'll listen all night. It's fine.
Well, there's definitely, there's definitely truth to the double standard, right? Be respectful to some, but not to others. I, I hear you.
Lee, please announce the number again.
So that number again to call in is 772-7101. Hi, you're here for public comment? Hold on, I'll put you through. Okay, please state your full name and address for the record.
Hi, yes. Uh, hi, my name is Zoe Harg, and I live on the west side, on Oak Street. Um, I've lived in, and worked in Binghamton for almost two years. Uh, my family has worked in prison reform. My friends have worked to bring arts education to jail. Um, I and the other organizers here are, are glad to be part of this public hearing. It is important that decisions are made with the input of the community that you need to serve. Um, I would like the current police budget, as well as the potential raises to the police budget, to be reevaluated, and those funds to be divested to better serve the community. We don't need two or eight more officers. Let's enact a smaller budget so we can divest the funds to address systemic issues and lessen the initial needs for these law enforcement services. Support and fund existing communities so that they can grow. Uh, this group here has put together lists, uh, through public vote, of alternative avenues for funding. Um, we could fund affordable housing to lessen the financial strain on people here, especially as our national economy takes the biggest hit we have ever seen. Increase the amount of grants for glass and mine businesses, for small businesses, and our city can grow, and our economy can survive the COVID hit. Provide rent vouchers to help support hurting households since our governor refuses to cancel rent despite a looming overwhelming number of impending eviction. Expand substance abuse and harm reduction resources. The police are no longer responsible for the behavior of their health of the Binghamton community. Start a city youth center to help provide meals and academic help to kids with food instability at home. Fund youth summer jobs. Even fund community gardens. The potential list of other community services that could be funded are endless. Uh, tonight, we heard a man give an account of when the police protected his home from desperate individuals. Imagine if the individuals who had to be met with police action had instead better access to substance abuse counseling, better access to affordable housing, and more financial support. There never would have been an incident. No one's lives would have been endangered. No person should have a job that is responsible for handling behavioral health issues, solving crimes, criminalizing homelessness, and handling traffic issues all at once. Break up some responsibilities so each issue can be better addressed and our communities can heal. We haven't even addressed the oppression of marginalized people that is perpetrated by police officers. While a second caller felt that he could call the police and be protected by them, that is a privilege. Nonwhite individuals cannot call officers without fearing for their own safety. Victims of sexual assault and domestic violence do not receive actual support or help from existing police departments. All across our nation, race hits go untouched and calls go unhelped. I'd also like to correct some misinformation I heard tonight. Um, the NYPD was not really defunded or dismantled at all. Their funding was relabeled, and instead, police presence was increased in public schools. It's, uh, crime is increasing in our nation is because our government refuses to care for its citizens who are desperate and who are hurting. Uh, thank you very much.
That number again to call in is 772-7101. Hi, you're here for public comment? Hold on, I'll put you through. Okay, please state your full name and address for the record.
Yeah, my name is Tarek Bellazam. I live on south side of Binghamton. Um, I'm calling because I just want the council members to kind of take a pause and think about what's being shared here this evening. If we look at our infrastructure investments, transportation investments over decades, we realize that they were designed by white, able-bodied males predominantly. And there was an entire group of those with physical disabilities that were not being accommodated by our transportation investments. Fortunately, those folks were listened. Those marginalized folks were listened, and we've changed some ways in which we invest our transportation and infrastructure dollars. I think for decades, our healthcare system was written by white men and didn't always accommodate the needs of women and women health, uh, reproductive health rights. Fortunately, we have changed that system as we've better accommodated our investments and our approaches to the health and safety of all residents. I would just ask the council to realize that what you're hearing tonight, both locally and across the country, are demands from a marginalized group and a pretty significant segment of the population that is not serviced by our current approach to community safety. The only word we have for that is law enforcement, and that is wholly inadequate. And so the challenge is, is to, instead of dismissing the voices you hear and trying to find ways to undermine or dismiss them, recognize that our current approach to community safety is not only failing to serve a constituency, but is actually harming a constituency. So what I would encourage the council to do, there have been comments about how the police have been great in responding to crimes after the fact, which we have to realize that the police that are not there to prevent crime, they're there to apprehend the offenders or perhaps deal with issues afterwards, but they don't prevent crime. Well, if it's been so great, and they've been doing a great job in doing that, and I have called on them myself in the last year, eight positions are currently vacant in the police department. That's what this budget, um, informs the public. Eight positions are vacant, and they have been put in a contingency budget, which means that you may eliminate them if the funding doesn't come through or if Cuomo does cut this local aid by 20%. My recommendation is to eliminate those positions immediately through this budget process. If they are vacant, and if Chief Sikuski is serving this community and enforcing the laws adequately, we don't need those positions filled. What I would also encourage you to do then is take all of those dollars and put those towards Community Investment Line, a broad line or a reimagined community safety line. Put in $100,000 that the mayor has put for diversity training, which seems like an incredible amount of money with absolutely no details. So that when the community does actually influence the Reform Board that you are mandated to pursue by Governor Cuomo's orders, there will actually be a pot of money to implement ways that we can reimagine community safety. Otherwise, you have no dollars, and you simply have more, more police officers. So what you're doing is- is if the police officer count were to remain the same, you're telling all those who are saying the system doesn't work for us, we don't hear you and we don't care. The fact that this budget actually increases the police officer is worse. It's a kick in the teeth. And I would ask you to think about those past examples that I gave. We have a system that is failing to meet the needs of a segment of our community, and you need to do a better job in listening and then accommodating. And it shouldn't be you all doing that because you clearly have different experiences. You were the able-bodied folks that didn't mind the transportation investments that they were. You were the white males that didn't care that the health system needed to be reformed. You have a different lived experience with police. You need to listen to the folks who are telling you that it's broken and we need to reimagine our approach to community safety. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hi, you're here for public comment? Hold on, I'll put you through. Okay, please tell us your full name and address for the record.
My name is Alison Abrams. I live on the West Side of Oak Street. Hello?
Yes, you have five minutes.
I'm a volunteer with the North Side Distribution Center. This pantry started just last March in response to the COVID pandemic. The pantry is run by a mix of community members and Binghamton University students completely for free. And my friends and I have been dedicating hours of our labor for free each week to the 40-plus families a week. That means that hundreds of people are relying not on city council members or even local organizations, but a completely grassroots mutual aid network to feed themselves. And I don't know what you see when you look at the community, but in just three hours at, at the North Side Distribution Center each week, I see hunger, I see poverty, I see drug addiction and recovery over and over again. I see struggling mothers, I see displaced families. I mean, you would not believe that the stories of some of these people who are stuck in this abusive cycle of poverty and neglect, these are Binghamton residents on the North Side. So I don't know what you see when you look at your community and think, hmm, maybe police are going to fix this. Because I see people who need food, I see people who need housing, and I see people who need love, and they're not getting any of that. The people of Binghamton need to be seen. And you spend $1.2 million a year on police, and yet the North Side still doesn't have a grocery store. In fact, the North Side is a bunch of empty plots of land and the dilapidated low-income housing that has yet to be addressed. How about investing this fraction of those $1.2 million into giving people food? Community members are doing it every week for free at places like the North Side Distribution Center, and we don't get a single ounce of help from the city budget. You have all these disillusioned plans about lethal weapons and no rights and violent police expansion, but not a single plan for access to fresh and healthy food for a significant portion of your residents, which by the way, doesn't only apply to the North Side. The West Side and the South Side have their fair share of food desert as well. It's really shameful. People need to be fed. And while you continue terrorizing poor black and brown families, we're going to be continuing to feed our communities, we're going to be continuing to help each other, and you're going to be continuing to neglect those of you. Because as you heard tonight, many of us believe that the police do not keep us safe. There are, there are alternatives to the $1.2 million that you dedicate to policing that can better serve our communities. So let's imagine for a second that you take that money and use it towards things that matter. And to make it really easy for you to imagine, we've done some of the research for it. So please listen. For example, just $10,000 can help build 120 Vine's Community Gardens, which can feed hundreds of families. Just $50,000 can fund grants for 24 black and brown, black and minority-owned businesses. $100,000 a year to provide free entry services to 300. I'm asking you to reconsider increasing the police budget by millions and instead reinvesting that money into the things that actually matter to the people you supposedly serve. Thank you.
Okay, that number again to call in is 772-7101. Hi, you're here for the public comment? Hold on, I'll put you through. Okay, please state your full name and address for the record.
My name is John Solak. A late Hare Avenue, Binghamton, New York. Pleasure to be with you tonight. I have never heard so much crap in all my life. People don't understand basic civics. They don't understand anything at all. What they want to do is play a division game. They want to spend other people's money. They think that businesses are not created by government money. Businesses are created, small businesses, minority businesses, by bootstraps. What they're doing to the police department, they're doing to other professionals. You're seeing people in emergency rooms, people in the medical field being belittled, just like the police. Anger by superation. No ideas whatsoever, except give us money from an existing budget so we can play around. Vines already has a monopoly in the community garden space. This community can't exist without tax revenue. And what we're seeing in Broom County is the university taking a lot of tax property, a lot of property off the tax rolls. One of the simplest things that I've done, and I've done it for 30 years, and you can do it too, is to keep track of parcels going off the tax rolls and coming on the tax rolls. And you'll find that there's many, many more parcels in the last 30 years that have went off the tax rolls that have went back on. The answer is not no more nonprofit organizations. It's, it's not more outreach. And by the way, the city has community development block grants, and the food deserts are a thing of the past. Amazon honors SNAP. They'll send you anything you want. I guess you have to go to the convenience store to get milk and eggs, but that's it. So who's fooling who? The, the, the businesses close up because they experience shoplifting. Third Walgreens in San Francisco closed up due to shoplifting. People don't rebuild their businesses because of disturbances by dangerous people, some of which have called your program. They've attacked me. They've, they've done physical harm to me. That's why I know these people well. They're a joke. Tarek Adelaz is working for the land bank and he wants to form his own land bank. Why does he want to do that? He wants to build a real estate portfolio that pays no school taxes, that pays no county taxes, that pays no city taxes. That's what he wants to do. He wants to build, be a real estate developer, but doesn't want to pay the taxes. This area has too mu, too many nonprofit activities. With the behavior that's evident in Binghamton with all these unlawful assemblies, I think we need more police. Normally, I'd come down and say that, you know, the sheriff doesn't need an armored personnel carrier. But what I've seen in this city, what I've seen in the breakdown of the law and order, what I've seen at recreation park within ours, and yeah, we do need more police. We need more police to keep track of these dangerous radicals that want to destroy our civilization. Thank God, we have Woodrow Wilson School in the city of Binghamton. Thank God, we have Columbus School in the city of Binghamton. Thank God, we're not tearing apart our heritage of the great, let's, the great explorers of the day that came to this city, to be honest with you. They were brave people. They were men. They were manly men. Let's not forget about manly men. You can't have a family without a man, without a father, and to, to wander around with one case management file after another and claim that this is doing anything for these people. What these people need to do is they need to do something for themselves. We have many trade schools. Forget about the degrees in sociology and the study of revolution and the promotion of hate. Learn to be a plumber. Learn to be an electrician. Learn to make a good buck. Learn to be a civil service, civil engineer. These are the things that are going to put people out of poverty. Individual responsibility. Don't make a mess out of your life and then hand the bill to someone else. Don't become a drug addict. Don't, don't knock up all the women you can find and have all these children out of different mothers and then say, it's society's problem? Are you kidding me? Don't do drugs on the street and sell drugs and buy drugs and engage in all kinds of lascivious behavior and then blame the good, honest people that didn't step over those lines. No, this city needs to be rebuilt, and it needs to be rebuilt by going back to the social order.
Sir, your time's up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, you're here for public comment? Hold on, I'll put you through. Okay, please state your full name and address for the record.
Yeah, my name is Tarek Adelaz. I live on Tavon Street in Binghamton. I'm going to keep this really short. This for that ugly fucking creep who just spoke, John Solak?
Mr. President, I hope you don't mind, but I'm going to hang up on him.
That's, Lee, when he, when he turned like that, when he starts swearing, please hang up. Don't, don't hesitate. Wait for me. Again, please be respectful. People calling, please be respectful. I, we'll, we'll listen to you. Eat your point across. I won't tolerate attacking a council person, any council person, and I won't tolerate foul language or disrespect. So please, eat your point across, and we'll certainly listen to you. Lee, announce the number again, please.
Okay. That number again to call in is 772-7101. Hi, you're here for public comment? Okay, hold on, I'll put you through. Okay, please state your full name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Rick Glass and I live on the South Side. I just want to echo, I do think John Solak is ugly, and he probably shouldn't be calling in any.
At this point, we're going to, can't, because obviously people can't follow the rules. I'm going to stop the public comment right now. It's my decision. I'm going to do that. We can't, well, I'm not going to put up with this. It's kind of crazy, and it seems like it's going that way. So we're going to move on with the agenda.
Mr. President, can we just try one more? Maybe, maybe they'll, maybe they'll stop that.
At this point, Joe, I'm not going to try one more. Thank you. Because that sounded like the caller about five callers ago, same guy. So I'm not going to, it's a lot of nonsense. It doesn't need to happen like this. So if they want to play games, I'm going to stop. Go ahead.
Um, Mr. President, I just respectfully, the, I, I don't think it's fair to not allow future callers because past callers were being disrespectful. They don't have any control over what, like, people who are waiting to call in don't have any control over what the past callers are saying, and I don't think it's fair to prevent future people from calling in.
Well, that's my decision. I'm going to stop the public comment. We're going to move on with the agenda, please.
Also, I'd like, just like to point out that Mr. Solak insulted a lot of people when he was talking. Just, you know, so he was disrespectful, like, I guess, you know, language is, okay.
But people are certainly, people are certainly welcome to call in during the budget, the public comment and the budget, which is Tuesday. So, um,
They're also welcome.
I'm going to move on with the agenda, please, now. Let's just move on. I don't want to discuss it anymore. We're going to move on. Let me find out where we are in the agenda, please. I believe we're on the, we're in a preferred agenda. So does anybody want anything removed from the preferred agenda, please?
Yes, this is Councilwoman Riley.
Hi, Councilwoman.
I would like to move introductory ordinance 2093 from the preferred agenda.
Sharon, I need a second on this, correct?
Uh, no, she doesn't need a second.
No, if any, if any council member wants to remove an item from the preferred agenda, they may do so at the beginning.
Okay, so, and your introductory 293 is removed from the preferred agenda onto the non-preferred agenda. Anybody want to?
This is Councilwoman Friedman. I would also like to remove an ordinance from the, from the preferred agenda. Let me just see which number it is. The, oh, I'm sorry. 20-99. I would also like to remove from the preferred agenda, please.
Okay. Anything, anybody want to remember anything else? Sure, you're welcome. Anything you want, from preferred agenda to the non-preferred agenda?
So, Lee, for the purposes of the record, 2093 and 2099 have been removed from the preferred agenda, so we can move on to reading of the preferred agenda without those items.
Correct.
Okay, Lee, please read the preferred agenda. Mine is 90, 2093 and 2099, please.
Okay, so the first item on tonight's preferred agenda is introductory ordinance 20-90, considered in finance. This is an ordinance to amend the 2020 sewer and water budgets to fund the serial bond interest due to refinancing of the 2012 bond.
Questions or comments on this? Okay, Lee, hearing none. Move on, please.
Next, we have introductory ordinance 20-92, considered in finance, and this is an ordinance to amend the 2020 budget to fund the demolition of 34 per.
Questions or comments on this, please? Lee, move on, please, to 20-100.
Okay, next we have introductory resolution 20-100, considered in the employees committee. This is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Aetna Insurance for Medicare Advantage Plan.
Questions or comments on this? Okay, Lee, hearing none?
Okay. And the last item on the preferred agenda is introductory resolution 20-101, considered in planning. And this is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a professional service agreement with CNY Fair Housing, Inc. for housing rights and assistance, availability, education.
Okay, Lee, let's take a voice vote on this, please, on the preferred agenda.
Mr. President, motion to accept the preferred agenda as amended.
Okay.
Sorry about that. Second, okay, say it by Councilman Burns, okay. Let's take a voice vote, please, Lee.
That's a roll, Paul.
Roll, so, all right, roll, please. So, I'll, in favor. I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
Sorry, Councilman Scorinji?
Aye.
Councilwoman Restonetti?
Aye.
Councilwoman Riley?
Aye.
Councilwoman Friedman?
Aye.
Councilman Burns?
Aye.
Councilman Strong?
Aye.
President Scanlon?
Aye.
That's seven i's, zero nays.
Okay, Lee, let's go to the non-preferred agenda, please. Let's start with 20-93, considered employees. Councilman Scorinji, please.
Uh, are we doing 20-91 first as it was the first item on the non-preferred agenda, Mr. President? Just making sure I'm following.
Sure, I did, sure.
Or maybe, maybe that doesn't matter. If it doesn't matter, that's not a problem. Just double check.
All right, go ahead, Councilman Scorinji, please.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. Stand and ask for unanimous consideration for introductory ordinance 20-93, an ordinance to amend the code of the city of Binghamton, Chapter 26, City Council, subsection 26-12, annual salary through, for 2021. So for our fellow council members who may remember during the council discussions of the 2021 budget, we had a discussion regarding city council salaries for next year. And we made a unanimous decision as all seven of us voted to move that page forward regarding subtracting what is in the city code currently as it relates to CPI adjustments and increases for our city council salary for next year. Council made a motion and passed to amend that line and decrease that total amount by $1,064. So we
So we would not be taking, uh, a salary increase next year. And then after that, if you will all remember as well, our court counsel, Ken Frank, informed us that due to the fact that that CPI increase and adjustment is in the city code, we needed to have a corresponding piece of legislation that kept our salaries flat in relation to that decrease that we all unanimously agreed and voted on. So this legislation is just amending the city code to show, show that difference.
Questions or comments on twenty dash ninety-three?
Yes, this is Councilwoman Riley. Point of clarification on the statement that was just made by Councilman Scaringe. What, what, what I recall is that we voted to amend the budget and the CPI for this upcoming budget year. And we said we would discuss the change of the code for the entire term. We did not review this legislation. We saw an email about this legislation. And so it needs to follow the proper procedures and be discussed at a work session, if I understand our processes correctly.
Mr. President.
Yeah, go ahead, Councilman Scaringe, please.
Uh, Councilwoman Riley, you are right that we discussed the issue. The review of the issue is what we discussed that night. So as you probably remember, all seven of us voted to not take a salary increase next year. Ken Frank immediately followed up by stating that if we were to do that, a required corresponding piece of legislation would be necessary in order to do that.
Okay, so this is, this is Sharon. If what I hear Councilmember Riley state, as well as Councilmember Scaringe, and I'm looking at the RL, is that there was an agreement among council to amend the code for the term in twenty twenty-one. But that further discussion was anticipated for the remainder of the term, which would run to twenty twenty-three. And right now, the RL appears to be from twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-three. In which case, if this city would prefer to continue, sorry, if this board would prefer to continue discussions on that, my suggestion would be to amend the RL on its face as applying to twenty twenty-one only, which is a relatively simple amendment in those two parts, right? So, um, essentially expiring December thirty-first of twenty twenty-one as opposed to twenty twenty-three. Um, and we can make them vote on that amendment and then we can vote on the RL in its existence. Um, and that's my surmisement based on what I just heard Councilwoman Riley state as her concern. So feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's the issue between the council members.
Yes, that is correct, Ms. Sorkin. Again, we amended this budget year. And again, we have not reviewed this legislation in a work session. This is new legislation that does not fit what we voted and approved during the budget hearing.
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilman Scaringe, go ahead, please.
Councilman Riley, are, are you saying, as the counselor said?
Um, per Robert's rule, you are to address the president and not typically another council person. So, um.
I, I, I started that out by saying, thank you, Mr. President. So, Councilwoman Riley, just so I can get edification to understand what you are saying, is the Assistant Court Counsel correct that your concern is about the time issue?
I confirmed what Sharon Sorkin mentioned in the affirmative.
Okay, because you didn't say the time issue the first time. You said, you said that we were going to review it. If you, if the time issue is a concern, that, that's completely understandable and that's not a problem. If the body at the suggestion of court counsel wants to amend it to just make it for next year, I, I personally don't see an issue with that.
This is Councilwoman Friedman.
Yes, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I would like to echo Councilmember Riley's, uh, both of the, the points. And if I'm correct in, uh, maybe separating the two issues. One is the timeline. I also had the same concern that I was under the impression that we were amending the budget for this year only. I'm happy to reconsider it at a future date, but I, at this time, um, would prefer if this were only, or I, I should say, I was under the impression that this was only going to be for this year. I also, uh, am hearing a second concern about that there was no, um, that normally we review legislation at a work session first. Um, I can echo that concern, but I think it's a, a separate issue. But certainly, if, if someone has to make a motion to correct the timeline, I would like to make that motion so the legislation only affects the year of twenty twenty-one.
Okay, so, so I'm sorry, President Scanlon. So just so this is clear, this is Sharon. The correction would be in the whereas paragraph that city council wishes to amend section twenty-six twelve to establish no increase for members of city council for twenty twenty-one period, striking through the line through twenty twenty-three. And then another amendment to section one A, which should read, "From January first, twenty twenty-one through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, the annual salaries of each of the members of the common council of the City of Binghamton shall be." And that's just so we're on the same page with regards to what such an amendment would be.
I would like to move to make, to amend the legislation, um, as such, as was just outlined by Corporation Counsel.
Mr. President, I'll second that.
Okay. Any other discussion on twenty dash ninety-three?
We just need a roll call vote on the amendment.
Okay, Lee, go ahead, please.
Hey, Councilman Scaringe.
Hi.
Councilwoman Resnetti.
Hi.
Councilwoman Riley.
Hi.
Councilwoman Friedman.
Hi.
Councilman Burns.
Hi.
Councilman Strong.
Hi.
President Scanlon.
Hi.
That's seven i's, zero n's.
And then I believe it would be appropriate to call.
Yeah, Mr. President, if, I'm sorry, Sharon, Mr. President, if I may. So I'll withdraw my original motion and I will ask that, um, for unanimous consideration of introductory ordinance twenty dash ninety-three, uh, to be moved forward as amended.
Do the roll call on this? I need a second on this, please.
Second, second, Joe.
Everybody jumped in second, okay. Um, roll call, please, Lee.
I'll call the question, Mr. President.
Question, McCall, thank you, Joe.
Councilman Scaringe.
Hi.
Councilwoman Resnetti.
Hi.
Councilwoman Riley.
Hi.
Councilwoman Friedman.
Hi.
Councilman Burns.
Hi.
Councilman Strong.
Hi.
President Scanlon.
Hi.
That's seven i's, zero n's.
Thank you, Lee. Okay, I believe we're on the twenty dash nine-nine, considered finance. Councilman Strong, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I asked, uh, council for unanimous consideration of introductory resolution twenty dash nine-nine, a resolution authorizing the application for an acceptance of a fiscal year two thousand twenty-one Edred Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant.
Questions or comments on this?
Yes, this is Councilwoman Friedman.
Yes, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I removed this from the preferred agenda because I, you know, as we heard tonight, this is not the first time we've heard from the community that this is, this is not, in my opinion, um, the kinds of things that we need to be applying for, for grants for or funding. It doesn't sit right with me that the park patrol and the community policing is not par for the course of what a police officer should be doing during their shift. It, you know, the, the community really, really does not want us to be pouring more money into the police department. Also, this is a, a four or a three, a three-year grant as well. So I just, you know, if, if this is not what the police officers normally do during their shift, if they don't have time for that, as Lieutenant Bidwell said during the, um, the work session, I don't think that fixing that issue will come from giving the police department more money. I think we need to retool something else, um, because that should just be part, part of the job. Thanks.
Thank you. Other questions or comments on this?
Call the question, Mr. President.
Question, McCall.
Sure. Uh, before we do that, did the, was there a second on the motion? I didn't get that.
Need a second on that motion, please?
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Okay, so it was called a question. Councilman Scaringe.
Hi.
Councilwoman Resnetti.
Hi.
Councilwoman Riley.
Hi.
Councilwoman Friedman.
Nay.
Councilman Burns.
Hi.
Councilman Strong.
Hi.
President Scanlon.
Hi.
That's six i's, one nay, Friedman.
Okay, that's a non-preferred, or third item, non-preferred agenda. If you have any, if you have orders, nine-one, considered planning, Councilman Strong, or Councilman Scaringe, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, before I ask for unanimous, uh, consideration of introductory ordinance twenty dash ninety-one, an ordinance authorizing the sale of one oh six Park Ave to Jake A. Brigham, I'd like to make a motion to declare city council as lead agency under seeker.
Okay, and one, well, let me point out one thing on this RL, too. Full disclosure, Mr. Brigham is a City of Binghamton employee. He worked in the Parks Department. So go ahead, Joe, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to declare city council as lead agency under seeker.
Second.
Need a voice vote on that?
Hi.
Hi.
Anyone oppose? Okay, continue, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to identify the proposed action as unlisted under seeker.
Second.
Need a second? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Anyone oppose? Call, continue, Councilman Scaringe, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. And lastly, I'd like to make an, uh, motion to issue a negative declaration under seeker for the following reasons. This is a vacant lot in a residential area. The purchaser owns the adjoining property at one oh eight Park Ave. The proposed use is green space for the adjacent property. The transfer will preserve green space and provide for future maintenance.
Need a second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Mr. President, point of order, we need a roll call on that, Mr. President.
Roll call on the seeker, thank you.
Thank you, Jill, thank you, Sharon. Roll call, please, Lee.
Okay, Councilman Scaringe.
Hi.
Councilwoman Resnetti.
Hi.
Councilwoman Riley.
Hi.
Councilwoman Friedman.
Hi.
Councilman Burns.
Hi.
Councilman Strong.
Hi.
President Scanlon.
Hi.
That's seven i's, zero n's.
Thank you, Mr. President. Now with the completion of seeker, I'd like to move introductory ordinance twenty dash ninety-one for full consideration, an ordinance authorizing the sale of one oh six Park Ave to Jake A. Brigham.
Need a second, please?
Second. Second.
Sharon, is all in favor? Is this a, this a roll call, right?
It's, uh, comments and comments, discussions and questions.
I'm sorry, you're right. Um, questions or comments, please?
Call the question, Mr. President.
Question, McCall? Okay, Lee, please.
Councilman Scaringe.
Hi.
Councilwoman Resnetti.
Hi.
Councilwoman Riley.
Hi.
Councilwoman Friedman.
Hi.
Councilman Burns.
Hi.
Councilman Strong.
Hi.
President Scanlon.
Hi.
That's seven i's, zero n's.
Okay, Lee, do you remember where we left off last time with communication from council members?
I do not. Sorry, I don't have.
Does anybody?
I was last.
Okay, so we're, now you're first, right?
No.
Want to be first, go ahead.
No, it doesn't matter to me. Um, I'll go ahead. Uh, good evening, everybody.
Go ahead, if you don't mind, go, go ahead, please, if you don't mind.
Okay, cool. Uh, good evening, everyone. Again, I, um, want to thank everyone that has lended their votes to not only the budget hearing process, but all of the comments and feedback we've gotten from each other, as well as our constituents and some of our non constituents. This has been a learning process. And I don't know about you guys, but I'm tired. This has been a long couple of weeks. But I encourage that feedback. Um, I know we heard several people mention tonight that there is a written plan with suggestions. I look forward to seeing such. So I encourage you to email every member of council so that we have what you're discussing in front of us. Um, similar to the comments we heard tonight, I do look forward to hearing the committee makeup for executive order two oh four. I was talking to President Scanlon. Apparently, the committee has been filled. I'm not aware of who's on the committee either. And, um, again, it's important to know who's fulfilling this role so that we are. Hello? Using the voice to listen to the voices of the committee, um, um, adhered to the executive order. Um, I would like to say, um, it's, it's, as I mentioned earlier, it's been tough. And we are new. It takes us a while to walk through legislation. It takes us a while to really hone the skills of perfecting our use of Robert's Rules of Order. And it takes time. But in this time, we deserve grace. We deserve grace because you, everyone is new at something once in their lives. So I say that to say that, um, it, it, it makes it extra difficult when we feel as if we're missing out on pieces of information. It makes it difficult when we feel like certain people received an email and others did not. And, and, and we don't want to suspect that things are awry, which is why we ask so many questions. So I hope that we can continue to work together, be as transparent as possible so we can do what we've been elected to do and do it to the best of our abilities. And over the course of the next couple of years, we will be those legislators we desire to be. I do, uh, want to thank all of the city employees that have helped this week. You hear my voice is going out, I'm sorry. But, uh, again, we've made phone calls, we've been emailing, trying to understand the budget so that we could move expeditiously. And there's still time. That's why we have these extra days to really. That's why we have these extra days to really understand what we're voting on, including the voices of the community. So again, I encourage people to write us, call us, and let us know what they think. I also want to thank DPW and the co-team who have been called out on behalf of my constituents that have been calling this week. They have responded really quickly and planning, planning and zoning. There's some, some concerns about proper zoning and, and they, again, turned around really quickly. So I thank you and look forward to the days ahead. Have a good weekend.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I'm the Councilwoman Friedman, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to echo a lot of what Councilwoman Riley said, that this is, this has been a busy week. This is our, or busy two weeks, really. This is, this is our busy season. And like Councilwoman Riley said, a lot of us are new at this. So it's, it is a learning process and it's, you know, it takes some time. You know, we have to ask questions in order to learn how things work, what things are. I know that transparency is kind of a buzzword that we like to say a lot as elected officials, but that's something that I really believe in and really strive for, which is why I like to ask questions on the record so my constituents can learn along with me as I am trying to, you know, be as thorough and educated about the budget. Because this is, you know, this is the arguably one of the biggest things that we do as City Council. And, you know, I, I want to be, I want to be secure in the knowledge that I'm doing the best job that I can and I am as educated and transparent about this process as I can be. Having said that, I am so thrilled that so many members of the community called in and felt really passionately about what, you know, about the budget and other things that are going on in the city. We were elected to represent the community and it's important and necessary to hear voices that, of people who experience things that, that we may not. I was disappointed that the public comment was cut short. I had some constituents that were actually contacting me during that time that were trying to call in and were not able to. One person actually, they sent me a message that their grandfather died this morning and they, they wanted me to know that they were still trying to call in and have their voice heard because they said that's what their grandfather would have wanted and they were very, very disappointed to not be allowed that opportunity. So I'm glad that the budget hearing, or sorry, the public hearing, I mean to say, is on a different day than the votes because then we can, you know, consider what our constituents want and, you know, hear, hear their voices. So thank you again for everyone that, that was organized and rallied around a really important issue. And also, I would like to echo what Councilwoman Riley said about, thank you to the department heads that have been, I'm sure, working overtime to try and help us out with everything and, you know, be as clear as possible and help us to be able to pass a budget that is hopefully, in the end, representative of what our community wants and needs. So I'm looking forward to that night. Should be interesting. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I'm the Councilwoman Burns, or I mean, apologize, Councilman Strong, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be brief, I'm not, not feeling so great tonight. So I do want to echo what Councilwoman Riley, Councilwoman Friedman just said. It is new and it is quite a process, it has been quite a couple of weeks. I do want to thank everyone on City Council for helping me, you know, as the chairperson even, even more so to, to go through that and to understand, help me understand things and help things move along. So I appreciate all of you. And I do appreciate Corporate Counsel and, you know, Chuck at the Finance Department and Lori with IT. And she's obviously way more than IT, she does a great job. So I, and everybody else at the city that presented to us, I appreciate all of their time. So I thank you all for that. I do look forward to, to hearing from people on Tuesday. I think that, just to reiterate what I think has been said, and I think there was some misinformation before. Tuesday, the 27th, I believe, is a special meeting to, for, for our public hearing. There will be a special business meeting, but the intention of this council is to formally hold that over till the 29th. So there'll be additional two nights, as Council President said, and one day, full day in between. And we will not vote on the, we will not vote on the budget the same night as we are having the public hearing. So I just want to make sure people are aware of that. I'd also like to mention that early voting starts this Saturday in New York. You can vote at the Public Library in Binghamton, the mall, or the library, George F. Johnson Library in Endicott. It starts this Saturday. You can vote every day up to the November 1st. There's one break on Monday, the 2nd, to, to let the poll people reestablish themselves and then obviously Election Day is in November 3rd. So please vote, everyone, and thank you and have a good night.
Thank you, Councilman. I'm the Councilman Burns, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too would like to thank Chuck and everybody that Lori and everybody that helped us along the way here. It reminded me very much, it took me back to when I used to oversee the two-day production meetings on Hollywood productions that I did. Actually, this is almost the same process, although the language that we use here is a little better than we use there. But anyway, on the South Side, oh, the, the people that were calling in, you know, when, when we go to work, I'm not sure who's on the committee either that's going to do the new policing law, but I will be paying attention to it. And I will, I am going to make sure that it says, that, that the people in the community know what's going on and that anything that it's told to me, that if it's not getting through to the people that are on that committee, that I will make sure that it gets to the committee if I think it's relevant. And if they're saying it, it is relevant. So, you know, the people on the South Side that live in my district, there, there isn't a lot of crime. There isn't a lot of, you know, people live mostly, you know, pretty well. And I want to open my eyes wide to see how people are living throughout the city and I want to make everybody's life better and I want us to, to work on that. I want people to feel that the, that the police department is serving them. So it's frustrating to me when I hear that, that people are living, that, that, living in a way that, that isn't. And I'm very concerned and interested in making that right. Anyway, on the South Side, they have put the, they put on hold the talks of combining the, the center with the, with the, with Roberson. So we're all set there for another year. So anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. I'm the Councilman Skorjic, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to again say thank you to everybody for getting through the budget. Phil, as finance, Sharon, you did a great job moving us through it. Chuck and Lori, Mayor's Office, everyone, all the department heads. And just want to give a special shout out to the DPW. Were really, really helpful with some issues that we had here in the first district, getting those knocked out right away within 24 hours. So Mark, Bernice, John, Dominic, everybody on, all the street supervisors, all the drivers, just keep doing a great job you always do and want to thank you for it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I'm the Councilwoman Resnetti, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's hard being the last one because I will be repeating some of the things that were already said. I too want to thank everybody who was involved in the budget process. I want to thank all the department heads and the mayor for working hard on this during this pretty challenging, you know, difficult year. I really want to, to give out a special shout out to, to our Councilman Strong for doing an amazing job. Phil, you made it seem really easy and I know that there were some very late nights. So thank you for that. Good job.
Thank you.
Also, just like everyone else said, thank you to DPW. Phil, thank you again for reminding everybody about early voting. It's really important that we all get out and do that as we have plenty of time now with early voting being in place. I, I did also want to thank all of the callers, all of those folks that have reached out. Yeah, it is unfortunate that we didn't necessarily keep it going a lot longer. I, I mean, I, I understand why. I also understand that other voices need to be heard. But I also wanted to say that, I guess I understand now a little more than ever, the hesitation from folks to call in. For example, just about as many phone calls that was received tonight have received with, you know, an alternate, a different viewpoint regarding some of these issues. And it's really unfortunate that folks feel that they're not necessarily feeling safe to make these calls and give their names and addresses. And, and I, and I, like I said, I get it a little more now than ever because it doesn't always feel very safe for them because we don't come together and work together, but we attack each other. And that's problematic. I don't think that it's serving our community in any way. So something that I've been thinking about today. And to close, I guess, let's not forget about COVID. It's still there and I want to encourage everybody to, to be careful. Today, or was it yesterday, we got an email that BU is going back on, back on in face classes, in-person classes. So I guess that is a good sign, but it doesn't mean that we should let our guards down. So with that, have a good night, everybody, and thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Just, I'll be brief here. Councilwoman Riley was incorrect when she spoke at the beginning of this public, or the comment session for council people. She said that, I said the selection committee was filled for the governor's executive order. I never said that. And then she asked me if I knew if it was, if I knew if there was more selections that I, the text said, you have to talk to the mayor. So I have no idea if this is filled or not. So Angela, you were incorrect saying that. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourned.
We're adjourned.
Good night, thank you.